Hi, everyone. This is Cookeville Now, your local pop video podcast. I am your host, Herbert Williams, and my co-host today is Clarissa Williams.
Hi, everybody, and thank you for joining us today. We're excited to bring this to you. We have been to all of the meet the candidate events, and we decided we would bring you one that asks everyone the exact same questions and the same timeframe and give you their perspective. We will be bringing you this unedited, so you'll probably hear me say stuff that I don't mean to say, but I would rather you see an unedited raw format, so you can hear every single thing that everybody says. We do have construction going on outside the building. As we all know, there's lots of construction, so you may hear the cranes going off. Hopefully, you don't, but if you do, bear with us. So, welcome, Eric.
Hey, guys. It's great to be here. I appreciate you guys having me out.
Well, we're excited to hear what you have to say and get started today.
Absolutely.
Now, Eric is an incumbent. He's been, already served his first four years, so I'm gonna ask you, I usually would ask, why are you running? But I'm gonna ask, why did you originally decide to run, and why are you doing it a second time?
Certainly, yeah, four, four years here in about two weeks from now, so I'll be excited to see that milestone, and I certainly do hope that I do get to serve again. You know, like, four years ago, I wrote a letter and put it in the Herald Citizen, and it was like, why do I want to be your councilman? And, and I think back today on that letter. It's one of the things that drives me, you know, that core belief, you know, over, over four years, there's a lot of things that can happen, that you learn, that you know, and that you figure out, that could maybe change the way you view your position, or change what you value. And, but I always see it's important to hold those same values for the reasons that you got into office, the same reasons that you want to continue service. And what I value is, ultimately, it's, you know, it's giving back to my community. And I think that, you know, there's a theme of that with me. For some reason, I get involved in organizations that I get highly involved with, do a lot of volunteering, do a lot of things, and it's always to give back to my community, because I do love Cookeville.
That's great. That's great.
Well, and we will go ahead and have you do like the, kind of the elevator speech of, here's who I am, this is, we'll just give you an open-ended, just tell us who you are, and for those that may not know you.
Sure, sure, sure. So, so my name's Eric Walker, and I, I'm a local Cookevillian who's been here all my life. I attended, the only time I spent really away from Cookeville was when I was in Knoxville, Tennessee, getting a degree in political science. It was more concentrated on legal studies. I thought I was gonna be a lawyer, but I had a different path for me, and that I really enjoy now. But Cookeville's my hometown. I'm a hometown person. I love Cookeville. I want, I want kids and people that grow up here to have the same great experience I had growing up. And I don't want to see our town change. And so, I really felt like I needed to get involved. I needed to do something about that years ago. And I think that, you know, I've gotten to a point where I've got the experience, I've got the understanding, and I can really help navigate government bureaucracy and, and representation. And I really believe in representing the people. I believe in that the people should have a voice on the council. And that's one of the reasons I ran. I just felt that I could fill that position really well.
Well, good.
Great. Well, I think, moving here about four years ago, we were not strangers to the area. Our son wanted to go to tech, so we moved here for that. My mom and dad had property over around Lake Tansy when I was a little girl, grew up in this area. But, since we've been here, and I know it was going on before that, we have seen massive changes with just construction, whether it's construction, or traffic, or whatnot. But we want to talk a little bit about transportation. We feel like that is one of the key topics, hot topic anybody you talk to. So, transportation, usually, you're talking congestion, roads, road improvement, all of those types of things. What would you do to improve the current situation that we're seeing right now?
So, Cookeville's a little complicated in that we have several major state highways that traverse through our town, and those are some of the hardest choke points that we see. You know, everybody complains about Jefferson and I-40, you know, 111 is a source for concern. We've, we've had to multiple times address issues at 111, and I-40 was the most recent where we had red lights installed. And so, when we're doing those things, it's not that you can just go out and fix it. You've really got to hammer down on your state representatives, the, the state of Tennessee government, and you have to fight a battle. It's, I hate to call it a battle, but you have to fight this fight to let them know that our city has needs, and that they need to address our needs. And so, you know, as we seek to, you know, the projects like Jefferson Avenue going south to 111, that's been in the works for well over 10 years. And so, you know, I believe in squeaky wheel gets the grease. That works in my business, that works in a lot of things I've done in my life. So, you gotta be that squeaky wheel. You gotta push those projects forward. And that's one great thing about the last four years, that we've been able to push more capital improvements forward, and the amount of money spent towards capital improvements has been more than Cookeville's ever experienced in the past. So, transportation issues coming up, we've got a list of 30 street improvements that need to be done, and prioritizing that list, understanding where the next school is gonna go, how to improve that road structure before you have an issue there, because it's, you know, and making sure that you're developing in a way that meets the demands of our community. But also, you have to understand that, you know, you can't open up the floodgates and expect the community to grow into it. You need to, you need to some, have some strategic planning involved as well.
Right.
Well, let's talk about healthcare. That has been another topic that we kind of feel like it ranks right up there with transportation. Quality healthcare is really important. We know that there's a growing population of people choosing Cookeville for retirement. We also know a lot of people choose to move here because of quality of life. So, as we look at that, we've just went through the last couple of years, tornado, pandemic, staffing issues. So, as you look to that, there's a couple of things we'd like to know, but what would you do as you look at this, thinking about the city owning Cookeville Regional Medical? How does the city owning the hospital help Cookeville? Secondly, how does this directly attribute to the tax base of Cookeville?
So, I understand the healthcare perspective very well. I am very familiar with CRMCs. After four years of looking over CRMC budgets, being a part of those strategic planning meetings, you get a wealth of information that you otherwise don't have a lot of access to. And I think one of the things, you know, I, one of the things I volunteer for is the RAM clinic when it comes to town. I'm part of the Rotary Organization. I get a lot of volunteer work through that, and that's a great organization to be a part of. And we do, I've always helped with the RAM clinic to provide kind of clean water and sanitation and things at that event. And you see all these people who are just in dire need of healthcare in our region. And, you know, our RAM clinic has been written up in the New York Times and all over national news media, so it's, it's really an impact that's pretty great. Now, having your own city-owned hospital has, you know, that began because there wasn't a hospital serving our community. And so, having that city-owned hospital, allowing the profits from that city-owned hospital to go back into capital improvement is the important thing.
Great. Well, I, I think that that's one thing that we hear a lot about. The other thing that we also are talking about is growth. We're experiencing exponential growth throughout Cookeville, and we do have a strong economy, which, you know, I think most people would love to have that problem right now. We have growth, but we have good economy. So, if that were to change, and we've came up with a couple of options here. If we, if we were faced with cuts, would you, one, scale back services, two, cut staff, or three, increase taxes? Which one would you pick, and tell us why?
That's a really hard question for me, just because Cookeville's in such great financial condition. And so, for me, the decision to allow Cookeville to be put in a place where it has to make cuts is where the error was made. Fortunately, you know, our policies over the fast, past four years have put us in a position where we, even through COVID, we had a surplus of funding. You know, a lot of people don't know that half of our sales tax, or half of our general fund revenue comes from sales tax. And so, we had to estimate, or, you know, it's COVID, are they gonna shut down all the businesses? So, we scaled back on our expenditures without losing any employees, without necessarily losing any services. And, but we were still able to scale back on expansion and, and other things that would have cost the city money. So, I think that's probably the biggest area. You're not gonna get the extra bells and whistles that you need in times of a downturn. However, Cookeville's very fortunate in that its sales tax revenue has been great over the past few years, and our finance director has done an excellent job at being very conservative on her projections. So, we, you know, if you look at the history of the past four years, we've always had a surplus over what we've budgeted to make sure that we had enough money to get through our general fund.
Right.
And I'm gonna turn the timer off, and we're just gonna keep going, and we're, we'll just keep this as open-ended at this point, and then we'll go from there.
Sure, sure.
Okay, the next question is, is we know, we see the issue with homelessness, that it seems to be growing in the area. What would you do to help solve or mediate it with services or whatever?
You know, that's a great question. And, you know, every, to ignore this problem would be a mistake. Just, I just want to say that first. I think it's been on the minds of the current council. It's been on my mind. We, we took steps to help employ an additional social worker with UCHRA, help give them funding for that position. And that's was to help our, help our police department, help our law enforcement, because, you know, you need, you needed an extra source of interaction, so that you can get to know these people, understand what their needs are. I can't sit here and tell you that all homeless are in need of something. Many of them don't want any help. And so, you have to navigate through that. You know, I, for one, think, taking a census, I mean, this isn't an incredible population. Then we're talking about hundreds of people, in the low hundreds of people. You know, it's not gonna be a rocket science to figure out who needs help, who's homeless, who's without a home in, in our area. And so, if we can get an accurate census of those people, and, and figure out the ones who are willing to, to take help. We have so many great community partners in our churches, in our organizations, that are willing to give people help. And so, it's navigating through that and using our social services that already exist to help navigate through that.
Oh, yeah. Well, and I think, anytime you have growth, you're gonna have those types of issues. And like you said, you will have some that truly do need, and you'll have some that are taking advantage. Unfortunately, it's hard to decipher what that is. But as we talk about growth, if we could just jump from that a little bit, one of the other things that we've heard a lot about, as we've gotten out and about in the community, is people have talked about how much we're growing, and they feel like it's too fast. Or, how are we gonna fix the, the growth? We don't, it's not that we don't want the growth. We're excited about the growth and the opportunities that comes with that. But how do we keep that small-town charm that we all enjoy in Cookeville?
Certainly. Change is scary, right? And so, you know, but it's, it's almost inevitable. You know, I don't, I don't think anybody's down at City Hall saying, how do we change that next property? You know, that, that exists because somebody has the right to sell their property. And, and then someone else has the right to come in, and, and for what it's zoned, it, they can develop on it. And so, that's where we see a lot of the change happen. Now, there are areas where rezoning, planning for the city makes a big impact. In fact, the Planning Commission right now is looking at impacts on 10th and Old Kentucky, and possible extension of that. You know, I believe that you have to make sound, good judgment choices when you're making those decisions. I've served on the Planning Commission for four years. It isn't just about growth, it's about sustainable growth. If you, if you start making more areas commercial that don't have the road improvements, or don't have the traffic studies to show that they can take that impact, you're gonna have a problem on your hands in the future. And so, you don't want to stunt growth. Growth, the community needs growth to thrive. And I support our growth. And Cookeville's had that steady growth for over multiple decades, most of my life. And, and it's been steady because we are a community that handles these changes slowly, and, and works together to, to make the right decisions, and, and don't necessarily open the floodgates to outside developers to come in and just build mass housing development. You know, I don't, I don't know that that's the answer. But I'm certainly open-minded to the problems and the solutions that we have to create with housing and other issues. But, and I certainly welcome any business that wants to come to Cookeville. But we need to strive for good-paying businesses who will bring people that can really benefit our community.
Right. Well, as a company, one of the things that we did, when we started our company about seven, eight years ago, is we were, we were very set on making sure that Christian principles were the foundation of who we are and what we do. One of the things that just absolutely drives me batty is when you have people that say, oh, I'm a Christian, I'm a Christian, and they either make that, the mantra, and it's not always there. And I'm not saying that we have that going on with the campaigns, but we have heard virtually every candidate talk about praying and different things as it relates to their faith. I'm a fourth-generation Baptist preacher's daughter, and my family has always been in church, but I also have friends that are atheist and agnostic. And I think there's different ways that we all communicate, and everybody that knows me knows that I will say, we can agree to disagree. There's a way to civilly do that without being in your face all the time. But I also firmly believe that it's our job as Christians to share our faith. We're interested in hearing about your faith and what it's rooted in.
You know, and I'm a, I'm a Christian. I grew up here in the First United Methodist Church here in Cookeville now. I'm, I'm a redhead, so I certainly was probably playing a lot of hide-and-go-seek in the basement when I was young, and, and being a little rambunctious. But, you know, and I had also had the privilege of attending a Camp Country Life, it's a nearby Christian youth camp, where we'd spend our whole summer outdoors. And, and it was really strongly embedded in Christian principles. And, and I kind of fell in love with, with the idea of outdoors and spirituality. And so, for everybody, I think it speaks to them differently. And I think that the important thing is, is when you're in the governing role, it's the principles and values that you carry forward, is, and how you, how you act that's gonna impact your community. And so, being raised with Christian principles and values, I think that that's had a great influence on my life. I think that, that makes, you know, I value integrity. I value things that, that, you know, where you make the proper decision, you try to do the right thing. And, and, you know, I certainly want to see positive messages brought about, and, because it's a positive community. It's hard to represent everyone in, in a negative light, you know. And, and so, I think that that's the Christian way. I think that that's the principles that you have to move forward with. I believe in having prayer before city council meetings. And in, in most of the organizations I do, we do that. So, I think that's a good thing.
Hey, everyone. We'll be right back after this short break.
We put your company in front of the right audience. Our services include website creation, search engine optimization, search engine management, social media management, geo-fencing, video production, podcasts, and more. We can help you get found easy and affordable. We are your partner. We work with you as your team, giving you the best option for marketing. Stop by today, email us, or call us at 931-854-1313.
One of the things that we also want to talk about is the mayor's position. So, that was the talk of the town about a year or so ago. But now, it's shifted in focus to more of, should that be a standalone position, or should it continue to be the person who gets the most votes?
So, I've been studying this, and I'm gonna have to have some, we're gonna have to get some help on this one, because from what I can study, I've studied, that we have a council manager system of government. It works great. You want a CEO in charge of the city of Cookeville employees. And the main reason is, we have three utility departments. We have over 400 employees. So, you don't want to let that be inconsistent over time. So, you want to keep a council manager form of government. It really works for the city of Cookeville. So, a drastic change in our charter would not be a good thing. However, they talk about what's an incompatible office. And so, mayor is compatible in our form of government with being on the city council. The mayor is a city council member. He's elected by the council to serve as mayor, to pretty much host the meetings. And, but he also holds a very important public relations role for the city. And so, I think the people should have an opportunity to vote for the council member that they want to serve as mayor. And I think that would do a lot of good justice for how we select our council members, and how many votes you use in an election. And so, I do believe that if there's a legal way for those compatible offices to be elected, that, because you don't, you don't want to see it take good people out of the running for council either. And I think there's a way that, the word incompatible legally gets, gets thrown in there, but we just gotta sit down and figure it out.
We often hear people say, I wish Cookeville had something here, or should have had something here.
I hear Target all the time.
Target, Home Depot. If you could choose anything you would like to see come to, and it could be anything, it could be, you know, somebody in employee or whatever. What would you like to see come to Cookeville?
Oh, gosh, you know, I don't want to see Cookeville change too much. But, but, you know, there are, I do like, like it when a, when a retailer, a higher, especially a higher-end like Target or something can come to town, because it does really help our sales tax revenue. And it really brings in things. But, you know, I'd, I'd really like to see something for the young kids come into town. You know, there, you see a lot of private recreational companies out there who build things, whether it's a water park, or a, or an arcade community, or whatever it is. You know, but we, and there was talk about that, I think, four years ago. But if something could come to town that I could really be behind, it, it would be something for the young people to get involved with. You know, it's just not the same old days. Like, you didn't all have the drive-in theater and the, and, and, you know, the kids aren't playing in the, and running, you know, across the neighborhood, or doing anything like that. So, it's just kind of, hey, if we can get these kids out there enjoying and, and working together, I think it's really beneficial for our community.
The one question I like to ask all the candidates is, when you chose, when you looked at running, what did your family think about it, and what are they thinking about it for a second term?
You know, that's, that's a question for them. You know, I love my family. You know, growing up here, like, a lot of people know your family. And, and I think that's certainly one of the benefits I've had to run for office, is that I've been blessed to be a part of a great family. And, and I certainly, you know, thank every day for that. You know, it's just, it's, it's a wonderful feeling to have, to have my, now, I lost my father a little over 10 years ago, and that was a really hard time for me. But, you know, I think they support me 100%. And they're behind me. And I think when it comes election season, they certainly are quieter on social media than maybe they want to be. But, you know, but they, and that's because they do support me, and that's my take on it.
Great. You know, we do things for our family, and that's, that's important.
Yes, that's a core value.
So, we all love Cookeville. We all know how awesome it is. There are hidden gems that some people know about, and there's events that a lot of people talk about. We all have our favorite destinations. If you were gonna pick one place, one destination, or event, or something that really resonates with you, and it's your favorite thing, when you think of Cookeville, what is it?
This may be a little biased, but Fall Fun Fest, it's a tradition in Cookeville forever. You know, it started as the Tony Stone BBQ Festival back in the day. I mean, this was before I was alive, I think, right, about the time I was born. So, I don't remember, I remember the barbecue aspect of it, but it, you know, it's evolved over many, many years. And, you know, it's got a lot of tradition in our city. It's free to the public. And it takes a really good group, CitiScape, which I'm involved with. That's why I say I'm biased. I help that, you know, organization, and, and donate to that organization, because I do want to see things like Fall Fun Fest continue, improvements of our downtown community. But it is, it is located downtown Cookeville, on the street, you know, just, it's next to our old courthouse. It really brings in our heritage and our character, and helps us remind us where we came from. And it's free to the public. It's good for the kids. You know, it's, you know, one of the biggest things added is the kids' activities. We try to, that, that festival is a family-friendly thing to provide to the community, and I'm really behind that.
Another question. If someone could, I mean, okay, I'm trying to say, what, if you could have been asked any question thus far during the campaign, what would you have liked to have been asked?
Gosh, that's a good question. And I did, I mean, we received some questions, but I, I'd do better if you just could have asked them. You know, if somebody could ask me right now, it's like, you've already asked me, why, why are you doing this? And I get that question, though. But it's, it's a question that, you know, what could you be asking the campaign that you haven't been asked? I don't know. I don't know a question that I haven't been asked. But, but I think the most important question is why you're here. And, and I think that, that, that matters the most. It's the question I want everyone to ask when I, you know, knock on a door. You know, it's, it's what your values are. A lot of people want to ask you, like, you know, did you vote for this, or did you do this? And it's, that's not as important as your integrity, and your character, and your trust, and your values. If you have those things, I think that you can serve the public better.
Um, we've got a couple of things. I'm gonna throw in a question that we, we had kind of talked about a lot of these questions ahead of time, but I'm gonna throw in a question real quick. We've had a lot of conversations about what is going on with Cookeville, but one of the things in the past that we've noticed is voter turnout is extremely low. It's abysmal at best. And our country's just not moving in the right direction, in my personal opinion. There's a lot of different things that could be done, but one of the things that can be done is when people get out and vote. So, what would you say about that, about getting out and voting, and voter turnout? Any comments on that?
It's the most important thing you can do in your society, and we've got to instill that into the young people. You know, voter, getting, turning 18, having the right to vote, you know, registering to vote, that's so important. You know, when you get your voter card, it's better than getting your driver's license. It's more important than getting your driver's license. Because those decisions on who you vote for, and who represents your community, is critical to our democratic republic, you know. And so, you know, you can't have a pure democracy that, that you go in and you vote on every issue, and everybody gets a say. So, you have to elect representatives to make those decisions for you. And, and you want to elect representatives who will listen to you. And, and you want that opportunity to be involved. And so, you don't want too many representatives, and you want, but you want to have a say in how your society is working. And the important way to do that is to vote, and to talk to your representative.
Well, if you were to give your younger self some advice, what would it be?
Reach out to my representative. If I was a young person, I would like, not be shy. I would pick up the phone and go straight to my representative and say, you know, call up Eric Walker and say, hey, what's this, what's this voting thing, and what's, what's this election thing all about? What's the city of Cookeville like? And I genuinely would take so much time to work with that person and say, here, let's come down to City Hall. Like, let's meet everybody. You know, this is, this is your community. You own this. You know, you're a stakeholder here. You're, you're a member of it, and, and you need to have a say in it. And, and so, you know, it's, it's yours. It's not, the electorate on our city organizational top is at the top of the chart in the city. It's not an individual. It's not the council. It's the electorate. And so, the, the city of Cookeville's done a great job of understanding its place, and, you know, and that it, that it is there to work for the people.
As we're closing this podcast series out with you, is there anything else you would like to say to everybody out there about your candidacy?
Certainly, I, I, I'm happy I'm doing this. I think that if we can keep the messages positive. You know, all the other candidates are, I've met them. They seem to be good individuals. I think that their hearts are in the right places. You know, I certainly think that anyone willing to put themselves out there like this, to serve their community, deserves a lot of respect. And, and if we can keep our messages positive, and we can keep a deserves a lot of respect. Um, and, and if we can keep our messages positive and we can keep a positive campaign and keep, um, you know, positively running through our city, I think that, that, that's a great thing for our community. Um, and so that's my biggest message right now. You know, we've seen some negative stuff kind of going around and, and I just, I don't like to see that. I, I want to see a community that wants to get behind people, um, and, uh, and, and, and really push forward to be a great place to live.
We ask our staff, we work with a lot of young people and we ask, what would you ask if you were talking to a city council candidate? And I've got a couple of totally off the wall questions for you. So we'll just go through these real fast. The first one.
Fun.
Yeah. The first one they wanted to know was, are you a gamer?
Uh, oh, I used to play some Xbox. I used to have an Xbox when I was younger, like, and I still have it. I think it's in a closet somewhere. Maybe it's still under the TV, but I don't think it works anymore. Um, so I'm, yeah, I'm not going to go out and like, uh, probably purchase the newest gaming system, but, uh, you know, I, my, my new joystick controls are like on an excavator or something, you know, doing work, so.
I still am a fan of Nintendo. I was, uh, duck hunt. That's how I learned how to shoot. So now my husband and my son are like, we need to go to the shooting range. I don't think duck hunts doing it for you. So next question, if you were picking a dessert and you had these options, which would you pick? Cake, pie or cobbler?
Apple pie and a homemade ice cream.
Okay. So if you were going to a restaurant or you were going home, would you choose to eat at home or would you choose to, to go out?
I guess it depends on who's at the restaurant. So, uh, but yeah, if I'm going to go see, see people, I, I love and know, I'm all for going out or if I could, but everybody needs a meal at home. And, and I love to cook, so I've got a pretty good spice.
All right.
Well, we wanted to thank you for, for coming to the podcast and sharing some more information about yourself. And, uh, for those who want to, uh, see us, we will be at the, we'll, I just want to share, we'll be at the Bizapalooza Tuesday with the Chamber.
The Leslie Town Center.
And, uh, remember Cookeville now is a podcast about the businesses, people and places that make Cookeville and the upper Cumberland what it is today. So stay in, stay tuned with us. We got some more coming soon. Talk to you later.
And don't forget to check out our website. This next Friday, we will have all of the candidate questionnaires on the website. So you'll get to see more information that we don't have, uh, time to go over today. But we appreciate you coming in and we thank you for filling out all of our questions and answering our crazy questions also.
We can never, we, we'd be sitting here a couple of hours if we go into the detail that the questionnaires have. So if you want to see those, that's great.
Yeah, you got covered all the bases. I'd highly encourage people to look online.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.